I pledge the allegiance and the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands under our umbrella, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Salamaca City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Nandebaca, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people on whose ancestral and modern-day land Salamaca School District now stands and through water we enjoy. We stand with all Indigenous peoples in their resolve to remain connected to their land, but we cannot undo what has been done. It is the goal of the Salamaca City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of Indigenous students. Thank you.
This is a note from the John (John) S. D. Human Rights Office. I doubt it. But we are. Do we have any change there?
Uh, the only change is the very last-minute addition that will order information in the form of a thank you card that I will read uh in the round immediately.
Then the back, the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Brad, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose, abstain, motion carried. Uh, next we have an executive session for the purpose of personnel and contracts. I need a motion after doing the executive session.
Motion. Circle.
Motion by Tracy, second by Christian, all in favor.
Aye.
For the pose, abstain, motion carried. We will be back out within fifteen minutes.
We'll make a question.
We shall.
Uh, excellent. My name is Phil. Ready with.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
We need a motion to reconvene in regular session.
Motion.
By Dale, second, second I, Tracy, all in favor.
I.
Pose, abstain, with Kerry, or confession, if you say four. I think we have, I don't know, you know, in the meantime. And we will move on.
I have a note here from Erin, he is unable to make the meeting tonight. But in any case, there are no big updates for Title VI. But the last IPC meeting of the school year is tomorrow night at six in this room here, the LG night.
Okay, okay. All of the candidates, that's the central of our sixteen students tonight, so. We want them to come to the office, I believe, about a word message. Um, do you want to say it in a quick time?
Sure, um, not really much, I just thought, yeah, I kind of want to, I guess, give, um, all the students and families some special acknowledgement. And some kind words on their awards last week, it's the donation event at the Yoder Lodge. Um, my little brother Camden as well, um, who might be watching this. Shout out to him and his awards and, um, everybody else, and that's kind of it for right now.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Crazy. Yes, welcome to everybody trying to get your hours on the last end of the year. I know the end of the year is approaching fast, um, moving up the, I think, is Thursday. I'm, I'm trying to work on, trying to work on attending, but, um, wish everybody good luck and hope you have a fun and safe summer.
Ed?
No, I just want to say the same thing, um, school by, school year ran by, um, we're at the end. Just want to, uh, thank everybody out for coming out tonight and also, uh, everybody out there. Um, good luck on your upcoming tests, the end is almost here.
Yeah. Okay, Brad?
That's all I was going to say too, is good luck on all your exams, I know. Cole's up there studying right now.
Yeah.
About the same, just, uh, congrats, uh, job well done this year for, uh, state of the students. Um, I wish all the students well, um, after graduation, it's a big push, so get everything done, batched, get done before the end of the school year. Um, and undergrads, you know, um, continue pushing hard in the end, thanks.
Kerry? Well, thank you to all of our staff for helping us push through another school year. Down to what, the last two weeks, so, almost there, almost there. I'm already looking forward to next school year. Um, so, man, the Warriors.
Yes, welcome everybody, I know we're a little tense tonight for the students, so I would expect you're all trying to meet your last minute credits. And we'll try to keep that fairly short for you tonight. Uh, again, good luck on our exams, don't let them last one to study, because if you're here, you take a little bit of time each time. You probably get to that, but again, listen, so. It's a follow too. Um, I do want to say, uh, thank you to everybody that helps with the Cindy Moore fight day run. Um, there were what, over a hundred people that attended, um. I ran it at my best time, but I still ran it, uh, it was a nice day, um, and we had a good turnout. Um, Jerry Black Mindy and Michelle Red Eye, uh, and all those students helped with doing the timing, um. It was great, and I was there taking pictures, I was, I was, so, uh, again, thank you for everybody that helped make it successful with that. Something to help support the class from seven, so, um, that's great. And we, I do wish everybody a good summer, I don't see you again, uh, in the event.
Sure.
Send it over.
Just a quick thank you to, um, honestly, across the board. Uh, you'll see tonight's agenda, there's an awful lot of work that has gone in to making sure the summer school will go smoothly from all of our district office and administrative personnel who are just getting our staff hired. Uh, you can see from the agenda that there are an awful lot that's going to be happening this summer. Uh, also wanted to just make a note for all of our employees that, uh, the twenty first, so that's Friday, the board is, uh, presenting the employee appreciation luncheon. So that'll be coordinated for all of your departments, uh, for your particular school. The board is also, uh, purchased ice cream for students, kids recall, so, you know, there's an awful lot that happens for our staff. And it's really more of a token of appreciation on behalf of the board, uh, that, that we can provide. It doesn't provide the same level of depth, uh, of depreciation that we feel for the work that they do every single day. So I think that's very important to note, and I just also want to acknowledge that that is a hundred percent from the Board of Education. So very rarely will you find Board of Educations who are consistently asking, what can we do to support our teachers and our employees so that we can make this a great place to work, uh, but in Sanlamento, that's just the norm. So thank you once again across the board and, uh, go Warriors.
Go Warriors. All right. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Nothing by Brad.
Second.
Second by Dale, is there any question? All in favor?
I.
Pose, abstain, question Kerry. All the students, we have, uh, policy sixty one ten, so we need a motion to approve, uh, policy sixty one ten.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Ted, is there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Uh, pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Under new business, we have the public, one of the ads, means scholarship. Um, so we need a motion to approve a thousand dollar, uh, donation, a scholarship to be awarded to either one student or two students who will receive five hundred each, so we need a motion to approve that scholarship.
Motion, second.
Motion by Dale, second by Kerry, are there any questions?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to make a note on this, so WAZ is the curriculum that we've been using for probably about six or seven years. Um, and Jim Flubek, uh, is, uh, I mean, he's just the vendor, uh, for that. Uh, but we have worked very closely with him and it's been a very positive relationship, and him and his wife decided this isn't a WAZ sponsored scholarship, this is just from, from him and his wife, um, in a way to sort of give back and acknowledge the relationship that we've had. Uh, which has really been mutually beneficial, uh, we have gained an awful lot from him and the partnerships that we've had and we worked through and really had some pretty good success. A good example of that relationship is, um, some science kits that we are continuing to purchase through OCS with them. And the question came about, you know, we need to pay our teachers to make, uh, some aligned tests that, uh, across the board. And I simply called him up, I said, here, look, if we're going to spend a lot of money making tests for these kits which are used across the state. And he said, you know what, let me talk to my boss, and they're hiring our people and the professionals to make the tests that we wanted them to make. And they're going to be used across the board, so just having somebody who's willing to go that little extra mile, um, saved us a significant amount of time and financial resources. And we know that these are going to be high quality, so, um, that, he's a former superintendent of one, so he knows education, he's a local guy. Um, but I just wanted to acknowledge and thank him for that, uh, because he really truly does want to give back towards students.
That's my question. So we have a motion by Dale, second by Kerry, all in favor?
I.
Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Item B is creation of a federal revenue bank account for the basketball cheerleaders, so we need a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Motion by Kerry.
Second.
Second by Chris, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Item C is our confidential staff employee working conditions contract from July first, twenty twenty four, which is majority of twenty twenty seven. We need a motion to approve the confidential managerial. Well, and then, and, I'm sorry, to the one amendment, and the one amendment, sorry, thank you, motion by Dale.
By.
All right.
To Ted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Motion by Ted, second by, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Item B is a vehicle usage for the veterans' power, so, um, this is for the electric multi-passenger vehicle. To be loaned for the veterans' power weekend, and we'll have our very own, uh, very kind of driving map.
The change shirt, yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
So I got a question, well, I got, I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm ready, every day, all day.
Wow.
Designated representative?
And designated, we'll change it to be end of the day as representative. Okay.
What is the qualifications or like, what do they need to be able to drive one of those, just like an age limited driver's license, things like that, or? For those electric vehicles, for that car?
They'll be covered under three Venetian.
Okay.
They'll fall under.
Yeah.
Insurance.
Driver's license.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. All right, then we need a motion to approve.
I'm thinking about.
Second.
Second by Brad, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Uh, item E is creation of some positions, right in July first, twenty twenty four, eighteen thirty three, twenty five. Detention supervisor for the high school, uh, ELAC coordinator for high school, student activism advisor for the high school, and a Daco financial advisor for the high school. So we need a motion to approve, uh, creation of those.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Christian, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
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 Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Next, we have one-time donations from the old deal, Masters of Frost, in the amount of four hundred dollars for the class of twenty twenty seven, for the Cindy Moore fight day run. Uh, for scholarship fund, and also a one-time donation, uh, from Myers State House, in the amount of two hundred dollars for the class of twenty twenty seven. Also for the Cindy Moore fight day scholarship, so we need a motion to approve those donations.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
I.
Good.
Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Item nine, our personnel consent agenda, and it's over a hundred and fifty six, is this coming? Exactly. Uh, so we have item A, which is our personnel action number one. Item. B, which is our summer bus drivers and summer monitors. C is number three, which is our summer program teachers. Four is our summer student teachers. Five is our summer athletic teachers. Six is our cook and food service helpers. Seven is our summer school teachers, special ed, APEC monitor, and the summer teachers, eight. Uh, let's see, eight is our summer RTI. And then finally, we get to I, which is the approval of item A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. And need a motion for it.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Chris. Are there any questions? All in favor?
I.
Pose, abstain, motion Kerry. Item, uh, oh, does anybody want to introduce?
I'm looking, I.
Oh, it's on Matthew Schlepper's.
Oh, yes. Would you like to talk about Tyler?
And Kobe.
And Kobe and Matt Schlerfe, it looks like mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Matt's on there, I was working, yeah, so, working right in front of her, very good.
Matt's not mine, but I know Matt Wallen and Mitchell's there too.
Yeah, nice, oh, yeah.
But Kobe and Tyler work out of our office, and this will be third summer. Um, they started out as student workers in our office, and they are integral to what we do, quite frankly. They, they've given a lot of the running around and smaller tasks, and our techs appreciate them, the N's degree. Um, they do all sorts of things, and we are so proud of the young men that they have grown into in the past couple of years, and it has been just phenomenal to have in our office. So they are, no, they walk around with badges, they go pick up devices and equipment and things from different spaces, deliver things, start people up. Take care of kids left and right, kids come in the door, they know to turn to these super assistants, it's really, it's been quite phenomenal to have these young men, and I'm so very proud of them. Take care of kids left and right, kids come in the door, they know how to turn to these two for assistance, it's really, it's been quite phenomenal to have you on that, and I'm so very proud of you.
We also have Matthew and Mitchell Schnapper, who are joining us via Zoom, uh, Matthew is in the red shirt.
He looks like a good dude.
Yeah, so.
Mitchell has the glasses.
Yes, and, um, yes, and Mitchell's the one with the glasses, right, exactly, so. I'm going to say that Matthew is the one, um, closest to the fireplace. Am I right? Yeah, nailed it, all right. Yes, uh, so they will be joining us, uh, for, as teachers for their summer, their steam summer camp, uh, they have been with us. Uh, did you do it last year as well? No? Okay, I was thinking that you did, but you are sort of omnipresent, both of you, at all of our school function. And we're looking forward to having you here formally, so as our delegatory and salutatorian, I don't know, is that we could really come up with two better qualified individuals to assist us, uh, as we continue our efforts to make Salamake a, a steam pub for the summer here, so we look forward to seeing you post-graduation, right away, back here at firm. Uh, we know your mom and dad would just put you right back to work, so we're looking forward to seeing you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. As well as lifeguards, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Sorry, I'm sorry, maybe I missed that one. These are the names, sorry.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Everyone else, we will.
I didn't realize there were no. Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I'm still learning some things.
Uh, I know Ted has our board information, our discussions, we have, uh, assignment change, uh, for Mel Ross. Uh, again, we had our second meeting of our policy sixty one ten, which we approved. We do have our stomach diet, new media, yearbook, so thank you for doing all these talks about our yearbooks. Um. UPK celebration night, uh, June eleventh. Um, you know, that's night.
Okay. Well, that was kindergarten.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, this Thursday.
Yeah, all right, all right. Um.
Yeah.
Was it?
That sounds good, yeah.
I can read the last.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The kid writing the eleventh all day of work, so I was hoping my weather.
But UPK is last Thursday, we said.
Okay.
It's last Thursday, yeah.
But everything went good?
Great night, yeah, there's some videos online as well, oh, it's a very much, yeah. So there's thirteenth is kindergarten, is that where it is?
UPK is Thursday night.
Okay, so it is right now.
Yeah.
And not under.
Upcoming events?
Yes.
Yeah, under board information.
Well, I think that, that's just a board meeting, that is, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked at that wrong, it's a great. Okay, uh, we have our several projects, say it's free summary report, our capital project phase four summary report, our transportation report. Uh, and our upcoming event, again, in your watch, tomorrow, moving update is Thursday, UPK's celebration, sorry, is Thursday. Uh, June nineteenth, uh, which is Juneteenth, no school. Um, the twenty first, that Dr. Beeler mentioned, is the employee appreciation luncheon, and we, the board members do appreciate everyone in this school districts. You bet.
So tomorrow night, we're actually doing a senior sunset, because they did a senior sunrise video of the year. So we'll be out back on the baseball field, um, the summit firepower will be here, there's panels all set up, around bonfire and a sunset.
Oh, nice.
They'll be here to start the fire and extinguish the fire.
Okay. Uh, the twenty fifth. Sorry, the twenty fifth is the last day for students, uh, our next Board of Education meeting is also the twenty fifth, which probably not as exciting as last day. Uh, we do have the senior parade for everybody, um, to be held on the twenty sixth at five thirty. Which usually is really fun to, to see everybody and. Right on my face. And then the twenty eighth, again, is high school graduations, hoping for the weather, so it'll be outside.
Yes.
Can I just mention, what this one night, back here, I'm gonna thank, this is their invitation. When you open up this, where it says UPK celebrate tonight.
Okay.
Under, it'd be open enough, it's your invitation to come.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's right. And we also have thank you letter that Dr. Beeler is going to leave.
Yes, I received a thank you letter this morning that is addressed to the Salamake Board of Education. Thank you for all your time given to the district, we are very lucky to have such a supportive Board of Education for our athletic teams. Thank you for your unwavering support, we are very grateful, sincerely, Salamake Warriors, varsity, try and feel it.
So. You do love thank you cards, too. She also likes names that board doesn't, we don't get those very often. No, they're.
Okay.
Very nice. Well, flavor, what do you got?
Um.
Just joking, it's okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks for offering.
So with that, uh, we will need, I'll need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Dale, all in favor.
I.
All those, second by motion Gary, thank you everybody for coming. We look forward to, again, we need to.
Yeah.